We'll get started. Good evening. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the City Council. There are agendas available in the back pocket of the room back there. All items appearing on the consent agenda, I wrote it on in one motion, and typically don't have discussion. There will be a period for anyone who has something they want to speak about that is not on the agenda will be able to speak during the community note session in the beginning. And so I guess to get started, we will start with community notes. If anybody has anything to say or talk about that is not on the agenda. Oh, I guess I'm way ahead of myself. Fred, would you leave us in the plane?
I'd like to leave this as a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can just yell at me the next time. All right, now, is there anybody who would like to speak about something that is not listed on the agenda for community notes? Rosemary.
I don't often do this. Correct, Amy? But I would like to share something. When we came into 2015, some of many of us across the greater Waterville, Winslow, Oakland, Fairfield communities have been working hard because we are into our 25th year with the Evening Sandwich Program. I remember the first meal, and we were set up, and we served a total of six. The second day, we served a total of 15. As of just a month ago, we have served well over 37,000 meals in Waterville with the ESP program. And for the first 15-plus years, we only served Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. But due to needs, and children particularly during vacation schedules and during the summer and so forth, needing to be fed, we started doing both Saturday and Sunday as well as Monday. And I have to say, it is an incredible team of people, the various churches that came together to do this. We've looked at funding, and we've been able to access some incredible stuff. And we have tremendous assistance from students in the Waterville, in the Oakland, and the Winslow schools. Can't say enough about it. But the starting piece that allowed us to actually open our doors was a group of students at Colby 25 years ago who pulled together and had a soup-only-with-a-piece-of-bread meal that students would donate. That gave us our initial $500 to kick this off. Just wanted to start off with January and a good positive.
Yes, come up to the podium.
I've got a couple more good positives to get you going. Mr. May, are you sure?
All right. My name's Matt Kane. I'm the Parks and Recreation Director if you didn't know already. Just wanted to let you know real briefly about a couple events we have coming up that we're real anxious for. We've got our Winter Carnival on Saturday, January 31st, out at the Quarry Road. And don't be too discouraged by the weather because we can make snow out there, and we're making it tonight on a small core area out in the meadow near the Welcome Center. So we should be in good shape. You know, these events are free, they're open to the public, they're healthy. And one of the more exciting things about this year's Winter Carnival is that we have free transportation. We got a donation from a local bank, a federal savings bank, to use, you know, to use our discretion, and we thought transportation would be great. I'm gonna pass around, I didn't make copies for everybody here, but I'm gonna pass around, if you can just take the thread and pull through it as you like and then send it on down. Pickup stops, couple, two or three down the south end, one at the library, then a couple up towards the north end. So I think that'll be great. It's a Waterville school bus, so the kids will recognize it. So hoping that, you know, if they couldn't otherwise get out there, they'll at least be exposed to what we have going on at Quarry Road. Later in February, on the 14th, we have Winter Fest, which is the second year that we've done this. We do it with Inland Hospital. Inland is a great partner of the cities, and my department in particular do a lot of great, healthy things for families and kids. So that's, it's somewhat similar to the Winter Carnival, only on a smaller scale. We'll have the Healthy Hometowns trailer there that's loaded with snowshoes and skis. We'll take the groomer down from Quarry Road and go around Green Street Park, and there'll be Senna's there with soup and cider. So yeah, that's just another great event. I hope you guys can make it. I'd love to see you all, either one of them. Any questions?
Matt, I have a question. Because I work at the junior high school, and do the schools know about this? Because there hasn't been any announcement.
One of these, there's gonna be a, sorry to interrupt you, Karen, but actually, Inland got a grant, a publishing or media grant. Every Waterville school child, and I think you can quote me, maybe not the high school, is gonna get one of these flyers, one of these, one of Carnival flyers. So everyone should know about it.
Yeah, well, I'm just, because like I said, I'm at the junior high, so this is really interesting for these kids to go to this. I just want to make sure that it's out there, that the schools know about this, and that they know that there is transportation. So I'll work through, I'll hand some over, but I just really want it in the school so they know it's there and they know they can go to this.
Well, maybe I'll email you a link or something and help, yes, spread that through the junior high anyways. So that's great. That's all I have. I know you've got a lot of important business, so. Thanks.
Nice way to start.
Everybody else? Community notes?
Yep. Mikey, go first.
Yes, I'm happy to introduce Brian Whitney. Brian is with the State Department of Economic and Community Development, and he's here to talk with us just briefly about the Business Friendly Certification Program. We've had one initial meeting, Councilor Mayhew, and I know Nathaniel White's gonna be involved, Councilor Pouchet also, along with the Chamber of Commerce to work on the Business Friendly Certification. I think you have amplets in front of you. Brian, thank you for taking the time.
Thanks, Mike. As Mike said, my name's Brian, and I'm the Director of Business Development and Innovation at the State Department of Economic and Community Development. For the past six months, I've also been Acting Director of the Technology Institute. I want to thank Councilor Mayhew for inviting me here to talk about being certified Business Friendly Community Program. I'm delighted to talk about it and the governor's vision for that program, as well as our other initiatives that are designed to really drive cultural change in government to a more customer-focused solution. As you all know, the past four years, the administration's really placed a great emphasis on pursuing policies that help recalibrate government's priorities and place Maine on a path to prosperity. The themes of that change included a renewed focus on the customer, meaningful hands-on assistance from government, streamlining of processes to reduce bureaucratic hurdles, partnerships between all levels of government and the private sector, and encouraging dialogue between the public and private sectors. To help achieve the change, the administration launched six new initiatives. Job creation workshops, which were held across the state from Prescottisle to Sanford. The Capital for a Day Program, which was held in each county, each of the 16 counties, and several communities within each. The red tape workshops and the red tape hotline. 25 workshops were held across the state, and a red tape hotline was developed so that businesspeople can call if they have, if they're engaged in some hurdles trying to get their business off the ground. The Business Answers Program, which is a one-stop shop for licensing and permits for businesses. The Governor's Account Executive, which is a team I manage, which works with businesses one-on-one to help them get the services and assistance that they need. And finally, the Certified Business Friendly Communities Program, which is what I'm here to talk about tonight briefly. Thus far, we've had 40 communities seek certification in the program. 31 have achieved it at this point, which is, I think, a pretty good percentage, given how rigorous the process is. So the point of the Certified Business Friendly Community Program is to help build upon what the state's trying to do in reducing the bureaucratic hurdles and other issues that businesses face at the state level. We're trying to partner with communities across Maine to help effect that change. And we recognize that there's many community officials, like Councilor Mayhew, and many of you as well, who value the importance of reducing government red tape and streamlining processes so that job creation can occur. So I've provided each of you an application. I won't go into a great deal of detail on what's required because you have it before you, but we look for several different components in that application. An overview of the community's customer service, so we're looking for detailed information about the community's efforts, resources, and capacity to attract new business and retain existing businesses, and assist those businesses who want to expand. Second, there's a business local involvement collaboration piece where we're looking for the community to describe its efforts, contributions, and collaborations that you've employed to encourage business opportunities. There's also obviously a public notice requirement and support letters that are sought, so we're looking for the community to describe its efforts to increase public awareness of the program and providing specific examples and details, as well as letters of support from key businesses in the area that articulate the types of things that the city uses to help those businesses succeed. There's another important piece in there about licensing and permitting, in which we ask the community to describe its licensing and permitting process and the associated timeline to complete that process. Once you submit the application, there's a team that's made up of both public and private sector economic development experts. They review each application to determine eligibility into the program, and they take into account the areas that we discussed, including customer service, business involvement and collaboration, input from the public, and licensing and permitting. And each community is evaluated on an individual basis, so it doesn't matter if you're huge or really small. We're gonna look at your community as an individual community and not necessarily judge you against differing-sized communities. So what's the value proposition for this program? Well, communities that are deemed business friendly receive a certificate from the governor, DOT road signs that demonstrate that you're certified business friendly, also offers bonus points to communities who are seeking community development block grant funds, and also allows the community to become a key part of our business attraction strategy. And another thing that I included in the materials you've got is Maine's Economic Development Magazine, which is our business attraction piece. We also obviously work hand and glove with Maine and Company, which is the state's private nonprofit business attraction arm. So you'll obviously be a key part of that program. The true value, however, of the program is really the community's self-assessment and the external audit of the program by this panel of reviewers. One of the communities that achieved certification offered the following quote, which is, I think, a good way to amplify the importance of this self-examination. The municipal official said, "I found that working my way through the application was a really great experience of reflecting on what we'd done and where we should be spending those precious few available hours in the day in order to make our processes more accountable." The important thing to know, however, is that being designated as certified business friendly is not the be-all, end-all. It doesn't guarantee job growth, it doesn't guarantee you're gonna be able to attract a major business to your city. It's obviously one piece of a much larger puzzle, which includes all the things we talk about all the time: tax relief, regulatory environment, a proven pipeline of quality workers, regional collaboration. But the process will help to expose any potential process and regulatory liabilities that may exist locally. And once exposed, if exposed, it's up to the community to address those and correct them in order to help foster job creation and growth. Finally, I want to add that the Certified Business Friendly Community Program now eclipsed the two-year mark. It was created in 2012. The certifications for each community are two years in length. So we're currently reviewing the program overall, its impacts and its successes. We're surveying the communities that are enrolled in the program and those who, we also certify those who didn't achieve certification, to get a better handle on the strengths and weaknesses of the program. So again, I want to thank Councilor Mayhew for inviting me here tonight. I want to thank the councilors for indulging me, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any results from the impact of the program? Any idea?
Yeah, I mean, so in terms of results, we don't, I can't quote, you know, so many jobs were created or so many businesses were attracted because I don't have that data. But as I said, we've had positive comments from communities who participated in the process. You know, as I look at the amount of communities that sought certification, we've had 40 applicants. 21 of those were certified on their first attempt. Another 10 were not certified initially, but we did a debrief with them. They eventually recertified, and I think, you know, I think benefited from that, like I said, that kind of audit of their programs. And one of the things that I think is difficult for job creators is, you know, the city's an imposing place, right? So I'm trying to create jobs and do business, and I don't know the point of entry in the city. So having a clear path for somebody to come to City Hall, know who they're supposed to talk to, and what, you know, what kind of results they could get from that effort is really important. And it's, I think it's a good exercise for the city to be able to get a better understanding of those kind of issues that businesses face.
Well, first of all, Brian, I want to thank you for coming. This was a long process getting you here, but we're definitely, definitely thankful for you being here tonight and just giving a brief overview of everything. And like I said, I think this is, you know, I wouldn't have worked so hard on it, and I want to include fellow councilors Dan Bushy and Nathaniel White. Of course, we are working with Kim Lamoff and Mike Roy on the application process now, and want to recognize them for their contributions and participation in this as well. And I definitely, I think with your words, Brian, I think we're off on a really good start, start 2015 on the right leg.
You know, you've got an exceptional team here locally, so to the extent that we can help, make sure you stay in touch. I know Mike and I know Kim well, and you're well-served by both of them, so let me know how we can help.
Thank you so much, Brian.
Thank you.
Very much. Any more community notes? I've been going to mine.
Any more community notes? Did you have something to say to me?
Yeah, I would like to, on the tail end of this community notes, out of respect, I wanted to make a formal address to the council a little bit. I would say, I wanted to save this because I, out of respect for Nick as mayor in the inauguration process, I wanted that to go through. And I just have, I kind of timed it, it'd be about four minutes, to ramble on here with an address to the council, start 2015, and of course, by my seat of office here representing Ward Four, so bear with me. First of all, I want to acknowledge and thank my fellow constituents in Ward Four for being here today, and I would like to personally recognize Mayor Nick Isgral, Ward Two Councilor Nathaniel White, and newly re-elected Ward Six Councilor Dana Bushy. I'd also like to extend my handout in cooperation and dialogue to current councilors Fred Stubbitt, Rosemary Winslow, John O'Donnell, and Karen Ranco Thomas. Most of you do not know me, but I can assure you that you will, and that I will work diligently to acquire your cooperation and mutual respect on many pressing issues that face our community. I am a blue-collar businessman that has 30-plus years of hotel-restaurant management experience. Waterville is a service center destination for many communities, and I am all about increasing our market share here in central Maine by encouraging and promoting real sustainable business growth and growing commercial, manufacturing, and retail jobs right here in Waterville. This will allow residential infrastructure to grow instead of what we see now on almost every street and roadway for sale signs indicating residents and businesses are overlooking elsewhere. Becoming a business-friendly community is where we begin. I ran on a positive platform for this council seat emphasizing property tax relief, creating a business-friendly community via certification, positive economic development, and repeal and/or modify the current pay-as-you-throw program. It is, in my opinion, and many others here today, that the most pressing need within our community is economic development, and that has to be our focus and summed up in one word in doing it is by being relentless. During my campaign, I ran on the slogan "Listening with real empathy to my constituents." This is something I have dedicated my life to doing and have learned to embrace both agreement and disagreement. As a general manager, I have faced many adversities. Finally, I want to share with you, all of you, two incidents that were highlights of my campaign in Ward Four. My ward is considered to be an affluent neighboring neighborhood stretching from Cherry Hill Drive to Mayflower Drive around Cool Street, straight up the odd side of Councilor John O'Donnell's Ward Five. On Utopia Street, I was walking and came to a large house and a woman outside behind her vehicle while eroding her groceries. She proceeded to say hi to her three young daughters who were just outside the house. I kindly waited and introduced myself as she was getting into her trunk of vehicle. She informed me with a smile that she loves Waterville, but has, but as a divorced, single mother of three, she was encountering a real inability to meet her bills, and one of the most significant of those was her quarterly tax bill. Now with pay-as-you-throw and three kids on her own, she admitted selling the home was a real possibility. She informed me of the mill rate increases over the years and the fact that she is unable to put money back into her home for improvements because she struggles, like the majority of us do, from living from paycheck to paycheck. I closed our conversation and was incredibly humble. The second home I visited on Mayflower Hill, as I walked up the driveway, two young children playing ball in the driveway acknowledged me and then proceeded inside to get their mom. The mom came out walking with a purpose and asked me abruptly if I was running for city government. I acknowledged her, and she made testimony of her home and how it was in need of repairs, as was not as prestigious a home at all by the amount of taxes she pays on an annual basis. After a quick tour, she told me that she had asked two family members whom I proceeded to meet that had just recently moved in with her in order to be able to afford the home and still live here. She then dropped the bomb and told me angrily that she pays double-digit thousands of dollars per year just in city taxes. Now with pay-as-you-throw and her increasing family size and her home, trash has suddenly become a burden as well. She then admitted she is seriously considering selling her home and moving elsewhere. I closed our conversation with great sympathy and urged her to reconsider. Here is my question to all of you. If our most affluent of neighborhoods is registering this kind of despair and distress, what are the less fortunate tax-paying residential neighborhoods experiencing? These are the faces of this community I will represent, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, councilor. Anybody else for community notes? We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Let's vote. Okay, and there is no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. And we have first Resolution 172015. Is there a motion?
Resolution providing for issuance of a special amusement license to Alex Lodge of Waterville Main Incorporated, doing business as Alex Lodge. Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows. At the City Council hereby authorize the issuance of a special amusement license to Alex Lodge of Waterville Main Incorporated, doing business as Alex Lodge, 76 Industrial Park.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All those in favor? Resolution 182015?
A resolution providing for waiver of foreclosure of municipal tax means. Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows. The City Council authorized the treasurer of the City of Waterville file waivers of foreclosure in accordance with Title 36 MRSA Section 944 to prevent the automatic foreclosures of tax means filed against the mobile homes listed below. Jessica Popret, 32 Victoria Drive; Timothy Frost, 23 Victoria Drive; Carrie McCafferty, 54 Victoria Drive; Daniel and Miki Quinby, 37 Victoria Drive; Chris Woodbury and Melissa Lozada, 75 Heather Drive.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Discussion, Mike, do you want to speak to these?
I do. This is something that we come to you every year with. Inevitably, there are some properties on the foreclosure list that we don't want to acquire. Foreclosure date is February 15, I think, February 9. And so we always come to you before then, obviously, to say, stop, we don't really want to acquire any of these five mobile homes because it'll be much more of a liability than an asset to the city. So Linda Cody, our tax collector, and I, every year at this time, review all the properties on the foreclosure list. Ninety-five percent of them end up paying by the deadline date of February 9, but we always are concerned about those few that may not, and these are five that we are concerned about.
Are these occupied?
I think...
Four out of five?
That's kind of a yes.
Yes, four out of five.
Should we foreclose on the ones that are occupied?
Well, if we did, even on the one that was unoccupied, we'd end up paying lot rent for the lot it's on in the Mobile Home Park, then we'd have to try to sell it. Pretty much impossible to move any of these because they don't have the substructure that'll allow you to move it. Some of them have roofs and porters and...
So they're basically deteriorated into bad shape.
Can we just junk them? Yeah, but why, it's been covered that cost, you're junking.
Well, is, I think, what is the plan for someone like me who doesn't really, do they just sit there and, is there some kind of payment arrangement, or, so just live there indefinitely without any payments?
Well, when we waive the foreclosure, we only give up on one year's worth of taxes. So there's another two years of taxes on these same properties. So we hope that, you know, by waiving this year's foreclosure, somebody shows up and starts paying the taxes, to back taxes on these. So we're not giving up all taxes, just one year.
Where's Victoria Drive? Isn't that Mobile Home Park off West Zero?
Headed side.
Headed side off West Zero.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Resolution 192015?
A resolution providing for ratification of collective bargaining agreements with Aspen General Government Unit. Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows. That the City Council ratified a collective bargaining agreement for three years entered into between the City of Waterville and Aspen Council 93, effective July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2017, for the Aspen General Government Unit.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Mike, you can do that.
So vote this resolution and the next one. Obviously signal that the unions, both of them, have approved the terms that we talked about at the last meeting, and we're happy to avoid any more mediation and to move forward.
And this includes the new insurance policy of the city?
Right. So they've agreed to move to a different insurance plan, considering the city did, you know, increase the amount of reimbursement somewhat on out-of-pocket costs, and the wage increases are two, two, two and a half over the three-year period. increases are two, two, two and a half over the three-year period. Oh, correct. That's the order, two, two, two and a half.
So we still have the big ones ahead though, right? Public Works and Police?
That's taken care of.
Public Works and Parks and Recreation are one. And matter of fact, we just received notice today that the police unit is ready to bargain for the next contract because their contract expires June Thirty. So we go from this negotiation into another one. We have one or two that expire every single year because they're staggered on three-year terms.
That's not bad.
Not bad.
You've done good work.
Yeah, with Bobby's help. And Mark, of course, was with us in the negotiations for Public Works. Bill Lee, of course, helped occasionally, so I'm pleased with the way it went.
All those in favor? Resolution Two Zero Two Zero One Five?
A resolution providing for ratification of collective bargaining agreement, Public Works Parks and Recreation Unit. Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows. That the City Council ratified a collective bargaining agreement for three years entered into between the City of Waterville and Teemsters Local Three Forty, effective July One, Two Thousand Fourteen through June Thirty, Two Thousand Seventeen, for the Public Works Parks and Recreation Unit.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mike?
Were we able to do anything with the seniority rules in this contract?
No.
So there were no changes?
There were no changes, no. In terms of when someone comes into Public Works, where do they start?
Right.
Right. No, we were not able to achieve that. So a new hire, as you know, starts at the bottom and has to work his or her way up.
Starts on the downer's track.
We're not going to give up on that.
Is there any way... Because some of us skilled people are close to retiring, and replacing them is going to be a problem. Is there any way we can work around that?
Well, I think the training thing that we instituted at Public Works is going to help to replace those that do retire, but we've also talked about reducing the number. We may not have quite as many of those heavy equipment operators, right? So we've talked about that too. So that will make that a little bit easier. Now we're not going to have to replace three or four, we might have to replace two or three.
Have we reduced the number of packers that we use?
We only use one packer, we have one spare. On a day like today, which was a double pickup, we did use two.
But over the last few months, we've been only running about half a day on the trucks.
Right, because our volume, trash volume, is down fifty-five percent, so you're right. By noon time or so, we've got it all, yeah, collected and delivered.
Any other discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor? Resolution Two One Two Zero One Five?
A resolution providing for revision, I'm sorry, revision of position description. Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows. That the current job description for the city planner position be changed to create an assistant code enforcement officer slash city planner position, and that the city manager be authorized to begin advertising for this position as soon as possible. The proposed job description for this position is attached.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I'll before you tonight to ask for this position change really for two reasons. One, we've heard about for quite a long time, and that's the fact that we're seriously understaffed in the code enforcement end of things. The second thing is, after observing it for as long as I have, I'm convinced that the city planner position as it is today is not a forty-hour-a-week position every single week. And I think that the hours that are available from that position should be put into an area that we know needs help. We've heard that over and over again. And after much thought on this over the last few months, I'm coming forward with the proposal that we've worked to change that.
Mike?
Yes.
I think you're thinking that a person filling half-code, half-planning might come on board for an entry-level salary in the forty-five thousand dollar range?
I'm hopeful, yes.
So we really haven't done a lot of research on that. I mean, do you know comparable positions in other municipalities?
Oh, I think that's comparable to what other positions there are out in the municipal community. I mean, I haven't advertised, so I don't know what the applicant pool is like.
What about combining those two roles? Is that something that's... Happens frequently, planning and code?
I can't say it happens frequently. And this is a true story. When I started out in municipal government over thirty years ago, that's exactly the kind of position that I started out in. Half community economic development, half planning and code enforcement for the town of Fairfield. Almost exactly what I started out with.
So you think it's doable?
Anything is doable. Finding the right person is the key. I was talking to Counselor Stubbitt about that today. Obviously, that is going to be the most important thing, finding the right person.
I think we can make a good case for hiring a full-time second code officer. The current code officer takes in revenue, fire, and excess of his job, his costs, and we're looking at a number of potential sources of increased revenue, but we don't have the personnel available to do the work. There are a lot of substandard buildings in the city that we aren't really giving the attention we should. There are a lot of vacant buildings that aren't getting the attention they should. And I think there's a good case to be made for a full-time second code officer. And I also think there's a good case to be made for a full-time planner with expanded duties. We currently do not have anybody in the city writing grants or researching grants, and we're missing the boat. There are plenty of other communities that are doing that function very strongly.
Fred, isn't it true, though, that the reason the code enforcement officer has made the big income the last couple of years is because we have some real big projects at Colby, at Thomas, and at the hospitals?
That's part of the job, that's right.
So if that level's off, that is going to go right back down?
No, we're missing a lot of things. We're missing an awful lot of things. I think I mentioned, Mike knows it, but I'm currently working on an ordinance that I'll bring to the council for vacant buildings. And other communities actually charge fees for vacant buildings to try to encourage the owners to upgrade their buildings and get them back on the market or sell their buildings. And we're not doing that. The fees that they're getting are as much as a thousand dollars, in some cases, two thousand dollars a year. I don't know if you know how many vacant buildings we have in Waterville, but it's huge. I was amazed as we started going through the city to see what there are for vacant buildings. It's amazing. Some parts of the city is building after building. There are all kinds of vacant buildings, and we're not really staying on top of that. I think that alone has potentially enough revenue to pay a second seller, but there are other issues too. There are going to be buildings built on both college campuses in the next five years. They all have ambitious building projects, and it's going to be tough for one code officer to keep track of that.
So it's in your opinion, Fred, that we can't sustain having a part-time code enforcement officer?
No, we can't, no way.
Plus a full-time one?
Right. So I'm recommending to the council that we table this issue tonight to give us a chance to discuss it in more detail and look at some of these options. So I make that motion, and we table it.
I second.
Is there a second?
There was, yes.
Mike, was it ever looked or thought of, instead of trying to find someone who could do both of these positions, keeping the current city planner and just hiring a part-time code enforcement officer? Which might be a little easier to be able to find, just somebody to be a part-time code enforcement to help Garth out? Was that ever looked at?
No. No, I was trying to prevent the addition of another position to the city budget. You mentioned at the beginning of the meeting the concerns you heard about property taxes. So the idea of adding another position to the budget is something I didn't think anyone wanted to hear. If that's different than what the council wants, then, okay, I mean, you're the ones that control the budget.
We have had a motion and a second though to table. We do need to take a vote on that. Can I get a vote on tabling this issue? All those in favor of tabling with future dates?
Do you want to set a date certain?
Yeah, what's next meeting, first meeting in February?
First meeting in February, because that would be good.
Mayor, can you say one thing? I just really think that we need to look at how valuable Anne Beveridge is and has been to this city before we say, you know, after twenty-six years, "We'll see you later." I just really, I'm not comfortable with that, how it's being done. She has really helped the city out quite a bit, and I think we need to look at everything like Counselor Stubbitt said before we do make a decision, one way or the other. Thank you, Mike.
I've worked with Anne on the planning board and seen what she does for the planning board, and I agree with Karen. I'd like to table this, get more information.
Resolution Two 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 Zero One Five?
A resolution providing for appointments to the City Council Committee. Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows. That the following city councils be appointed as shown below. Council Finance Committee, City Manual, Airport Advisory, blank, Fair Hearing Authority, Dana Boucher, and a blank, Capital Improvement, Nathaniel White, Solid Waste Recycling, Dana Boucher.
Move to adopt.
Second.
There are some additions to this. I'd like to add Nathaniel White to the Recreation Committee. Is there anyone that would like to serve on the Airport Committee? Counselor Winslow and I can go to the meetings. If anyone else is interested, please.
I'll do it. Absolutely.
Karen wants to...
Okay, so is that a motion to amend?
Yes.
Can I have a second?
Second.
In favor, all those in favor?
We have one remaining vacancy on the Fair Hearing Authority?
Yes. As a regular active committee, you want to just explain what that is?
Yeah, the Fair Hearing Authority hears appeals of general assistance requests, so it's really requires someone that can really listen and make fair judgments. It is a particularly active committee, so it wouldn't require a large time commitment.
Was there even, were there any meetings at all in Two Thousand Fourteen, Rosemary?
Five.
Five?
Five. They, yeah, and they take a lot of time. They've been...
And the Fair Hearing Authority is three counselors usually?
Yeah.
But not, but only one attends?
Only one attends.
So there are three people and you divide up the meetings?
I don't know, I've done them for the last ten years.
Yeah, usually you're the...
So, go with that.
You've been our most cooperative volunteer.
Mike, can we schedule at least two of these committee meetings next week? And I think Matt wants to also schedule the Recreation Committee next week.
Right, right, he was talking about that. I'd like to schedule the Finance Committee tonight before we leave next week.
And the Facilities Committee?
Yeah.
We need to have that meeting.
In a couple of weeks, give me a couple of weeks for that one.
I thought we could talk about trailers.
Trailers?
We've got five of them.
No, we're not requiring them.
No, no, we need to chat about it.
Yeah, okay.
I'm going to take a vote to approve, all those in favor? And last is Ordinance Two Three Two Zero One Five?
An ordinance providing for amendment of personnel ordinance. Be enacted by the City Council of the City of Waterville acting as municipal officers as follows. That Section Five of the Personnel Ordinance be amended as shown on the attached regarding the proposed change in the city's health insurance coverage.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Right, under Mayor's report, to finish the item we talked about, hopefully, to finish the item we talked about last week with the Central Maine Growth Council. So I'm passing out three attachments. The top one was the one that the mayor asked about last week, and that is budget for the Growth Council. The second page is the job description, and the third page is an item that Counselor Boucher had asked about. Whoops. I just feel like my third page is copied only on one side. So there should have been a backside to page three which listed two other...
You did all get it in the email, though?
Yeah, I did, yeah, I did email, call of view, and hopefully that copy had the back page. That lists all the organizations.
Waterville's own workforce is not on the list.
True, Waterville's own full-time list. I don't see them as a player in economic development, but we could talk more about that sometimes.
Now, can we talk about dissolving?
It still exists as a corporation, for sure.
And they've got money?
And they do have some money.
Sometimes they ask for it.
We'll put them on the list.
Is this the job description you're, they're putting online? No education requirements? No education requirements on there?
Whoops. Another sheet that's missing the backside. It certainly has some education requirements.
I'm sure it does, I'm sure it does.
This is what happens when you leave it to the city manager to make copies instead of having a manual do it.
I'm sure you can get a lot of applicants if there's no education required.
Right. So in regards to the budget, it looks like by contracting with the Chamber of Commerce, as we talked about last week, the total costs for the three towns to continue in the Growth Council would be, as you see on the very bottom line, almost twenty-two thousand dollars. Twenty-one thousand nine hundred. That's the increase from our current budget with the Growth Council, not city budget, but total budget for the Growth Council, to a budget next year with contracting certain services from the Chamber. Our share of that twenty-two thousand would be about half of it. So our annual costs would go from present-day thirty thousand a year to about forty, forty-one thousand a year.
And the bang for our buck, if you will, is that the executive director now has more free time to do the things that he needs to do and not simply the clerical workings?
Right, I mean, that is the focus, is to have one person that doesn't have to do agendas and minutes and answer all the phone calls and do a lot of the administrative stuff. That person will be able to go up to the businesses, find out what they need, what's missing, talk to any businesses that are interested in coming to the area, and so on. So before, with a one-person show, one person did everything, minutes, agendas, phone calls, and time spent out in the community... communities, was less than it should be.
I also feel, going back a number of years with regards to the Growth Council, I'm just pleased to have the one person who was doing it no longer out of sight, out of mind. And wondering what is going on or not going on, or is someone having a vacation day? So having that thrust and placed at this point in time, it's very visual. You can't miss it at the Chamber. It, I found, was a huge improvement. But I understand with the issue when you have all of the other pieces that you have to do, as we've been talking with regards to code enforcement and so forth. I'm good with this. This is much better. It's a starting point.
Is that $11,000 increase still negotiable?
He's talking about, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, for this year, the year we're in, not starting, I mean...
We're in a current, we're in a current budget year that does not include, won't include the $21,900.
So we're looking at 2016.
This would start July 1st.
July 1st.
Right. And so the mayor has talked about the idea of revisiting the formula, which I think is a good idea, on how the three towns share.
I would second that.
Because, and correct me, because we're looking for, or the Growth Council is looking for a three- to five-year commitment, correct?
They would like to see, right.
And I understand that. It makes sense. But I, my opinion is that we should revisit that formula.
I think we should revisit the formula this spring before, well, before July 1st.
Could we legally commit for more than one year to redo our budget then?
Yeah, I think that's always a good question, how far into the future we can commit. You know, we do it for debt service, obviously, but this is not debt service. So there's always that question, can one council commit a future council to spend certain money? But I mean, if we act in good faith and say that we'll do our best to continue to be a partner in the Growth Council, as long as we can see that there is accountability. They come to us on a regular basis and report in, and you're right, Council Winslow, we haven't had that kind of reporting in the past, nowhere near enough. And some of it is, there was one person trying to do it all.
I think that's absolutely necessary, that we have that accounting aspect in there. So if they are going to create this position and not saddle him with clerical duties, we have to have a way to audit that, to make sure that it's happening.
Yeah.
Especially where we're the biggest, you know, the pie holder here.
That's why the idea of having this person that's hired to be under Kim at the Chamber is important, because then there will be that oversight. In the past, there was no oversight.
There was not.
There was not. There was a board that met once a month.
Right.
And so for the other 29 or 30 days, the director was on his or her own. Now that person won't be a director, but will be reporting to Kim, who will be a de facto director, kind of.
So this person's under Kim at the Chamber and directly reporting to her? So the Chamber is therefore somewhat still leading the Growth Council?
The Chamber Director, Kim Lindloch, will be reporting to the Central Main Growth Council Board of Directors. Also with Kim will be whoever is hired being accountable for what he or she is out doing in the field. But you're right, the Chamber President will be the one that we'll be looking to. Because that person will be an employee of the Chamber. The person hired, the job description you see here, will be a Chamber employee. Before, the employee was of the Central Main Growth Council. So we had to do all the payroll, everything else involved with being an employer. Now, we're going to contract for that service, so it saves us the payroll costs. It saves us supervisory stuff. So there are sort of benefits.
Just like the Chamber is acting as a contract employee for the Growth Council.
Yeah, and Chamber's acting like a, right, yep.
Any idea how the other two communities feel about this concept?
Winslow certainly is on board with it. Fairfield is still, I think they're at the same stage that we're at. Right. I think they're close to approving in Fairfield, but I wasn't at their meeting last week, so I can't say for sure.
Obviously, if Fairfield dropped out, percentage of cost would go up?
Right. Just like when Oakland dropped out. Correct. That's right. Because the Growth Council is really funded by three sources. One of the municipal dues used to be four towns, now it's three. Second source of funds are from the large institutions, Colby, Thomas, the two hospitals. Third source of funds are private businesses. Central Main Motors, Martins, a bunch of other private businesses. So there are three funding sources. One problem with Growth Council in the past, that executive director we had, who was supposed to be out trying to attract business or retain business, was not going to the supporters, the financial contributors often enough to say, here's what we've done. Because that person had to do all these other things. So now we're going to have someone at the Chamber dedicated to that purpose. Going back to the businesses every year, saying, thank you for your financial support. Can we have it again next year? And here's what we've done. We didn't do very well at that.
Do you know, Mike, has there been any attempt to reach out back to Town of Oakland in any way to try to incorporate them in this, to try to keep costs?
Yep. Yep, we're hopeful that with the change in management that's happened there in the last few months, that we can get them back as a partner.
Because that certainly would be a benefit.
It would certainly wipe out the $21,900 piece, or a large part of it, a large part of it.
I wouldn't stop at Oakland, go to Bass Pro, China.
Yeah. Yeah, we could even look at those, visit those. That's certainly a consideration.
Any, any group that we give money to is a contract employee of the city, and there's still an onus on the city to make sure that we're getting our money's worth and things, because we're ultimately responsible to the taxpayers who pay the bill. And so we need to be regularly checking in. I mean, it's great to say that there's a commitment to anybody we give money to, but at the same time, it's on us, just like we would treat any city employee. We shouldn't look at them any differently other than an employee of the city to make sure that, that we are getting our money's worth. Because there's no doubt we've underfunded economic development. But we do need to be smart about where the money goes. So this doesn't rule out necessarily our, our own economic, potentially having our own economic development.
No, this does not rule it out. I still want to talk to the council.
Which obviously has to take place as part of a greater budget context.
That's right. I still want to talk to the council about another position change come budget time.
And is there still, are we still on a pretty quick deadline where they need our commitment as soon as possible? I'm not saying that I'm against this. I just, I'm a little nervous making decisions prior to us entering into a budget season and looking at a new position that we may want to add, a new code enforcement, a new, you know, various changes with Kage Pro and looking at that. I'm just, I'm still a little nervous on making this decision. But I'm not saying that I'm against it. I just, are we still on that deadline? Are they still waiting for us to give them the go-ahead?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are, right. Because really, we've been without a director since August. And so Kim at the Chamber has been doing it since then, and they, they would like a decision from the three towns. Are you in? Can we continue with the Growth Council or not?
Well, we can say we're in today, and before this thing gets funded, we're still going to have that discussion about.
Next year.
For, I thought we were talking about next year.
This is 15, 16. We're talking about now, isn't it?
I'm sorry, maybe I didn't understand what you're saying. We can say we're in now.
Mm-hmm. But come budget time in a few months, there's still going to be that discussion of the formula for funding.
Yes.
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 Yeah, yeah.
But I think if we say we're in now...
They're not, oh, yeah, right. There's not, they're not two opposing ideas that, that we're in, but we still want to look at this.
We certainly don't want to say, yes, go ahead and hire someone, and then say, oh, we're out July 1. Too bad you had to hire someone for four months. Let them go. No, we don't want to. But we've already sent the message to them about the formula. It seems like we're paying a huge share. Let's talk about how that's determined.
Should we need some kind of motion here?
This is not for voting, Mike. It's just, that's a manager's report. We don't vote on that.
I'm going to proceed by letting the Cabinet Chamber know that at this point we're supportive of continuing with the Growth Council. We want to talk about the formula starting July 1. And go from there. Okay? Yes, that's it on management's report.
Any final comments from anybody? Motion to adjourn? Anybody?
So.